So, the Planning Commission Rule 3B2 states, "In the absence of both the chairperson and the vice-chairperson, when a quorum is present for a regular or special meeting, an interim chairperson shall be elected from those members present." So you may vote on an interim chair.
So do we have a motion to, for Commissioner Henley to act as our interim chair?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Everyone in favor, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now Chair Henley will take it away.
Thank you fellow commissioners. Would like to advance us on our agenda by moving us to Item B, Adoption of the Agenda. So is there a motion to adopt the agenda? I hear a motion. In a second. There's no discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. I would like to move to the next item, the approval of our August 28th meeting minutes. You all received those in advance of the meeting. If there are any comments or questions, please let us know. If not, I will need a motion to approve those minutes. Have a motion. And a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Minutes are adopted. Item D, would like to make moment for recognition of any of our council members. Do not see any other than council member. Thank you for joining our board. I'm sure we'll have moments for recognition of that later, but thank you for joining your first meeting. Without that, I would like to move to Item E, Items for deferral or withdrawal.
I do want to make one quick announcement. You'll note that the microphones for the new sound system, this meeting you are able to control your own microphone and turn it on and off. So you will not need to get permission from the chair. Big responsibilities. Make sure that you turn it off when you're through speaking. Okay? It's weird echoey.
It is, thank you. And just for those in the crowd, would also like to remind everyone to please silence their cellphones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Items for deferral or withdrawals, starting on page three. Item number one, 2024 SP 060001, 1609 Fourth Ave, North. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 23rd meeting. Item number two, 2025 SP 009001, 1004 and 1104 Cass Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25th meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2025 SP 036001, 14768 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25th meeting. Item number four, 2024 S 139001, Shular Clarksville Highway. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25th meeting. Item number five, 15473P 001, Theenam and Townhomes Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25th meeting. Item number six, 2025 DTC 015001, 319 Peabody Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25th meeting. Item number seven, 2025Z 016PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25th meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number 10, 2025S 145001, re-subdivision of part of Lot 40, Plan of Clifton. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 23rd meeting. Item number 12, 2025Z 076PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 25th meeting. And that concludes our deferrals or withdrawals.
Okay, thank you. To confirm our items for deferral or withdrawal, just go back through the list. We have items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 10, and 12.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, that is our list of items for deferral or withdrawals. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Next item is Item F, and that will be the consent agenda.
Items noted below, as on consent, will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting to determine if there is opposition present. If there is opposition present, the items will be heard by the Planning Commission in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Starting on page five of the agenda, item number eight, 2025Z 064PR 001. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number nine, 2024SP 041001, Hamilton Church Point. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 11, 2025S 146001, Lot 3, Clinton Subdivision. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. I will now read the items on the consent agenda with their full captions as legal information. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Starting on page five of the agenda, item number eight, 2025Z 064PR 001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to RM 9NS for property located at Old Hickory Boulevard, unnumbered. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item number nine, 2024SP 041001, Hamilton Church Point. This is a request to rezone from AR 2A to SP zoning for property located at 3233 Hamilton Church Road to permit 24 multifamily residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Under letter H, Other Business. Item number 13, New Employee Contract for Matt Loftus and Contract Amendment for Sarah Cook. Item number 17, to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Okay. So I will go back through this quickly just to make sure. This is a short agenda. So tonight on the consent agenda, we have items number eight, nine, 13, and 17.
Correct.
Okay, Commissioners, those are items for, on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. That leaves us with one item tonight, which is item number 11.
Good evening. This is item 11 on your agenda. This request is to amend a recorded plat to remove the setbacks. Staff recommends to approve with conditions. The site consists of one parcel, approximately 8,000 square feet, located on the corner of Crowley Drive and Ivy Street. The property has been zoned one and two-family residential since 1974. The application for a subdivision plat amendment includes the requirement to provide letters from adjacent property owners indicating their approval of the proposed subdivision amendment. In cases where these letters have not been provided, the applicant may seek approval from the Planning Commission, which is why this applicant is appearing for the Commission today. As a refresher for everyone, a setback is the required distance from the property line that a structure is required to meet. The request to amend the plat today would remove the previously platted setbacks. This does not mean that the setbacks are going completely away, but would revert the zoning setback. On the screen is the original plat that is being amended. The subject site is identified with a star on the screen, and as you can see, the 20-feet minimum building setback is outlined in the red box. The original plat was platted in 1980 with the setbacks of 20 feet on Crowley Drive and Ivy Street. It is not uncommon for the older plats to have platted setbacks. Today, staff does not typically plat setbacks unless it is a unique circumstance. Setbacks will typically be determined by the codes department at the building permit based on the R8 zoning on this property. In the zoning code, there are setbacks determined by zoning districts and street classifications. On the subject property zoned R8, a 20-foot setback would be required. However, for single and two-family developments, codes will typically apply what is referred to as the contextual setback. This is the average setback on the adjacent single and two-family properties along the same block face with the same orientation. This would be required along Crowley Drive. Because this is a corner lot, the 20-foot setback would also be applied to the frontage of Ivy Street. This frontage would not be required to meet the contextual frontage as it is not considered the frontage of the property. It is permitted to reduce the front setback by half of the required zoning code standard, resulting in a 10-foot required setback in this case. The current proposed plat amendment is on the screen. The amendment proposes to remove the previously platted setbacks. With the original plat, a setback line of 20 feet was shown along Crowley Drive and a setback line of 20 feet was shown along Ivy Street. This amendment would remove those platted setbacks on both streets. With the removal of the platted setbacks, setbacks determinations will be made by codes at the time of building permit. If codes were to use the standard setback of the zoning code, it would be 10 feet on Ivy Street and the contextual setback on Crowley Drive, which would be approximately 33 feet. Today, the building is set back from Crowley approximately 28 feet. This is a corner property, and the driveway layout along with the site distance will be reviewed by NDOT at the time of the building permit. Staff finds that the application of the code requirements as appropriate as a contextual setback is still applied along Crowley Drive and along Ivy Street, where there is a new pattern of development which changes the context along this frontage. Therefore, staff recommends to approve with conditions.
Thank you very much. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing for this today. Is the applicant in the room? You guys can come forward, and if multiple people are speaking on behalf of the applicant, you'll have 10 minutes. Please, you can hold two minutes back for rebuttal at the end and start with your name and address.
My name's Harold Johnson, 914 Villa Place, Nashville, Tennessee.
Hold on one sec. Let's make sure the microphones are on for you.
My name's Harold Johnson, 914 Villa Place, Nashville, Tennessee, 37212. I'm proposing the setback, and y'all pretty much covered all the topics. Typically, it's a 10-foot setback for corner lots. However, this was platted at a 20-foot setback on the original plat. Right now, the house is sitting, I think you said 23 feet or 28 feet. We're actually pushing the house back to 38 feet, which would increase visibility and from the line of sight. I've spoke with the neighbors. Judy, I believe she's in the room right now. And I kind of walked the property and made my intentions of what I was wanting to do. They were one of the parties that was opposed to it. I know that I have several opposition letters, and I've read a lot of them. I think there might be confusion with some of the responses that I had read. They had the notion that I was wanting to push the front setback further, which is not true. I'm wanting to push it to the side towards Ivy Street. I'd also read in the letter that they had concerns about traffic, but there's a stop sign right there. So when the cars are coming down there, they have to come to a complete stop. They cannot be going that fast to hit a child or any walkers or joggers in the neighborhood, in my opinion. But again, we're probably increasing visibility by pushing the front building back 38 feet from where the building is sitting right now. Respectfully, I ask that y'all to approve my request. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. You will have two minutes. If there's anything you want to come back up at the end. So with that, is there anyone here that is speaking in support of this item? And seeing none, anyone speaking in opposition? And if you guys can come forward, you'll each have two minutes to, and start by stating your name and roughly the area of town where you live. You don't have to give us your actual address, but start with your name. You'll have two minutes. And if you guys can just be ready to come forward after she's done, that would be great.
Good evening, Commissioners. Does this sound good?
Yep.
My name is Judy LaJure. I live on Ivy Street, immediately adjacent to 600 Crowley Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight in opposition to the proposed change in setbacks for this plat. My main concern is pedestrian safety. The current setbacks offer crucial visibility to the intersection of Crowley Drive and Ivy Street. Ivy Street leads directly into Charlotte Park, so it dead-ends into the park. From morning to evening, this short street sees constant foot traffic, families with strollers, kids on bikes, and neighbors walking their dogs to and from the park. Crowley Drive, on the other hand, has a lot of through traffic and does not have any traffic calming measures in place. Just to clarify, the stop sign is coming from Ivy Street. If you're turning onto Crowley, there is no stop sign on the Crowley Drive side. Speaking of a stop sign, the stop sign at Ivy and Crowley has been struck and replaced so often that it is now entirely reflective red, including the post. I've personally replaced my mailbox twice, and it's the first mailbox on Ivy Street, which says a lot since Ivy Street is a dead-end street and it's only a dozen houses deep. It speaks to how vulnerable this corner really is. Despite its size, Ivy Street is a part of the neighborhood's daily rhythm. I urge the Commission to prioritize safety and preserve the character of the neighborhood. The current setbacks are doing important work, and changing them would put people at risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening, or afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Maria Baldo. I live at 6363 Ivy Street. And I urge planning to oppose the variance request at the corner of Crowley and Ivy Street. Crowley is a main thoroughfare through Charlotte Park neighborhood for both cars and pedestrians. Ivy Street is the only entrance which dead-ends into the only parking lot of Charlotte Park, meaning this intersection experiences hundreds of cars and hundreds of people on foot every single day to access the park. Myself and hundreds of others walk around this corner every day to access our beloved park. Passing this variance request will benefit one developer and add yet another hazard to all of the other hazards that exist to walk in our neighborhood. If passed, the developer will be allowed to build the street, thus blocking sightlines to opposing traffic and pedestrians. Like that's already been mentioned, the amount of accidents that have happened at that corner, not just with Judy's mailbox, but with several other mailboxes, cars fly through there, and it's really hard to see. And if my safety and my neighbor's safety isn't enough to convince you to reject this variance, please provide the traffic and safety impact study you've done to prove our concerns otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm John Mumford. I live at 6370, number four Ivy Street. And I oppose this variance request. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the time you spend here and your service to the city. And I also want to say I appreciate the developer taking time to read through the things and consider our opposition notes. The two main reasons is, right now, that would be the only house with a setback of Ivy at 10. It would be very odd on that street because the house would simply stick out. When you make that turn there, it sticks out, and then everybody else is further back. So just in terms of the way the street would look, it would look worse. But more importantly, it's a safety issue. The way, you've already heard about some of the reasons, but what happens is, I've lived on Ivy Street six years, so as you pull up to the stop sign on Ivy Street and you're looking on Crowley, right now, 600 Crowley on that side of the street, it's a straight shot. So you've got good view, and as you're driving, and also as people come out of the park, and a lot of people coming out of the park, maybe busy, people get busy doing stuff. But you can see well down on Crowley on the right. So that's a safe shot. And that will be limited with the setback change. On the right is a curve. So what happens is when you're making that turn, and I do it two or four times every day, you look to the, I'm sorry, to the left. To the left is a curve. So you're looking to the left. But if you had the setback change, then you've got to think about both ways. And inevitably, people in life make mistakes, and it just is likely to lead to more mistakes at that corner. So I respectfully request, Planning Commission, maintain the current setbacks on 600 Crowley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Savannah, I asked if you could put up a map that actually shows the houses, so...
My name is Elaine Corn. I live on James Avenue, a couple of blocks from this intersection, and I walk that area frequently. I think this map is a little more representative because you can see the house on the corner, which by the way, has now been demolished. All the houses on Crowley are in a line. All the houses on Ivy are in a line. So if you move that house now back that much closer to the road, it is going to be more difficult to see. And if the developer does put up a fence on that side, which he can do, that's going to make it even more difficult to see. So that's why we're asking to consider leaving the 20-foot setback. I don't know what the developer plans. He said a home on the property. But most people on these sized lots, because it's R8 and you can do two, will have two houses on it. So I think that's probably why he wants to take away the setback so he can maybe fit the two houses on it, given the front setback from Crowley. But we're just really concerned that it's going to make it a lot more difficult for everybody to see, especially if a fence goes up and you're 10 feet from the road. So we just ask you to consider leaving the 20-foot setback in place on Ivy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak in opposition? If not, then the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal. If you have anything that you'd like to say in response to comments. No? Okay. Okay, then I will declare the public hearing closed. So I have to say that in my years on the Planning Commission, I've never seen a setback amendment. I don't think. So can we talk a little bit about kind of what we're looking at and the process for this? And...
Yes, so yeah, usually we handle these administratively because Planning does require neighbors to sign letters in support. And so we did not receive a letter to the adjacent property owner for this case. And so that is why it's come here today. But usually, since they're wanting to remove the platted setbacks, as mentioned earlier, they are not going away. They would just fall back to the zone that they are in for that standard.
Okay. Okay. And that's the same on both Crowley and Ivy? Is that correct? They're both the same?
That is correct. I think for this one, since it is a corner lot, it is a little unique in that Ivy is considered the side setback and that Crowley is the front. So Crowley will have to follow the contextual setback. And since it is a corner lot, the side can go to half. So since it was 20, it will go to 10.
And I just wanted to make one clarification. It's not a variance. It's a request to remove what was platted originally on the plat, the setback that was shown on the plat. But it's not a variance. That would require a different standard for you to look at. It reverts to the R8 setbacks that are in the zoning code.
So I hate to put our new Commissioner on the spot, but as the council member for this district, I'm wondering if you might also want to help us get this conversation started?
Thank you. I appreciate staff's very helpful and very informative presentation on this. Based on the public comments that we received here today as well as that were submitted ahead of time, it seems that there is a gap between the applicant and the community on this. Ordinarily, I would say the Metro Council is best positioned to address community concerns on this. But with this type of item uniquely, I understand that we are the sole body that's making the decision on this. Meaning, if we approve this today, there's no further opportunity to address community concerns on that. And so, given that, I think it's appropriate or it'd be helpful to pursue a one-meeting deferral to allow the public to benefit from the very helpful presentation that we had here today with the clear information that was provided. And if there is a one-meeting deferral, I would encourage the applicant to meet with the community in the meantime to try to close the gap between the two parties. So with that, I would like to move for a one-meeting deferral. Can I do that?
Yeah. Yeah, you can. I mean, yes. Um, yeah. Whoops. Sorry.
If I break the system, I will be... No one will talk to me. Councilman, I just wanted to, I think that's a great motion, and I wanted to see if any of your colleagues had questions so that in that deferral time, if there's anything technical or that the Commissioners have, we can take care of that all at once, if that would be okay.
That makes sense.
Okay. And maybe there's no questions. I don't know.
Yes. Commissioner Marshall.
Just for my clarification, when NDOT reviewed this and they approved, I don't see any additional comments. Do they look at that piece? And do they make any comments about the issue that I hear them bring up?
So they will go out and review once building permits are pulled. And then they will go out there and then look at the site and look at the site distance. And I think they also review the driveway layouts as well.
So they approve it without any additional comments as far as the danger or anything to that effect?
Correct. They just reviewed just the plat amendment.
And like I said, this goes to what the R8 zoning already allows for all of the other properties in this area. And there are other lots, corner lots, that have 10-foot side setbacks or front setbacks on a corner. So it's not uncommon for this to occur, but they, like Savannah said, they will look at it in more detail when a permit comes in. But I think at this stage, they look at it to see, is this consistent with what zoning would normally call for? If it was a variance and they were requesting less than what zoning was calling for, what the R8 zoning was calling for, then I think you might have seen more concerns in the staff report. But because it is only requesting the typical R8 setbacks, staff report, but because it is only requesting the typical R8 setbacks, they didn't provide any additional comments at this time.
Commissioner Dunne?
Yeah, it sounds, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding this, and actually, I think you just answered my question, but it's not a variance. We're not asking for a zone change. We're bringing this up to modern standards from a plat that was put in place 45 years ago. Now, what we would be doing would be saying this corner lot is subject to the same setback requirements as any other corner lot in R8 currently. Is that, is that...
That's correct. That's correct. And I mean, we try, when we review these, we try to research to find, was there a reason for it? And we weren't able to find any particular reason why it was platted this way. And so generally, when we get these setback amendments, we look at them to make sure they're consistent with zoning and will recommend, but like Savannah said, most of these are done at a staff level unless there's opposition, that's when they come here. But we'll look at them to see if there's any particular reason that we can see why it may have been platted that way, and we weren't able to find any particular reason why it was platted with 20-foot setbacks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Henley.
Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to find the right distance for it not to echo too much. I think, and I absolutely agree with Councilmember Horton, that I think understanding that the context of this meeting is the last time for the public to participate. I think it's worth stating some things clearly or maybe even more clearly to, you know, help the community members in their future discussions. It seems as though the side setback is firm and would be set at 10 feet. I think where there may be some confusion, and I think that's where the applicant spoke in their presentation, is that exactly what the front setback may be and knowing that codes uses a contextual process for that. Based on what I'm seeing, and you know, I'm not as involved as the staff, it seems like the contextual setback would be at least 20. I mean, it seems like from the properties that are adjacent and going up, I'm saying up, going plan north, what we're seeing seem to have a setback that's at least 20 feet already. And it seems to be quite more than that.
Yeah, so currently, it would, the contextual setbacks would be to the two parcels to the north of it, because there are no more parcels south of it on that same block face, so it would be the average of those two and it would be approximately 33 feet.
On Crowley?
On Crowley, yes.
And I think that's important. I think some of what was stated was that there may be some confusion about what that would be without having as firm or as a fixed number as the 10 feet. I think it was worth stating that here. And then I had a question, and this was actually brought up by someone who spoke in opposition. I've driven down the street before, but also pulled up on Google Maps, you know, it's one of those neighborhoods, it's wonderful, there's not a lot of fences that face the street. It's much more open, much more inviting, but to the point that was made about visibility, with the setback being contextual, what does that impose as far as maybe guidance for fencing? Because I could see fencing being a visual obstruction, especially if it's brought fairly close to the street. I don't know if there's guidance or if we even have that level of authority here, but it was a question that came to my mind and then also was brought up from the remarks we heard earlier. So I don't know if there's any comments to that.
There are fence standards in the zoning code and I don't have them at the top of my head, but when you're closer to the street, they have, I think it's like a three-foot fence within a certain distance of the street, and then as you get to the backyard or further away from the street, then you can go taller. But because of site distance issues, primarily, they're required to be a lower fence when you're closer to the street.
I did want to just add one thing because I was aware of this, but there are actually additional standards for fencing for corner lots because there's what's sort of called a zone of visibility at a corner where you're turning, and so there are even more specific regulations regarding fence location for that zone of visibility.
Yeah, thank you. That concludes my questions, but I felt like that was good dialogue for all those in attendance to be able to hear.
Just to follow up on that clarification, I mean, the front setback is 33 feet. I think the applicant said the house is actually going to be 38 feet or something further back, but that means that even the low fence, can you, you can't fence, you can only go to your setback, is that right?
I wouldn't want to speak exactly to the fence standards because that's not something that's sort of within our purview and we're only looking at this very limited question about setback, but the codes has specific standards for fences. Yes, I'm sorry.
I think if we have one at a time, maybe. Any further questions from the commissioners? If not, if the council member, if you'd like to repeat your motion?
If you'd like to repeat my motion for a one-meeting deferral, please.
Okay. One second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So this will be revisited on the 23rd, September 23rd. Okay, I think that brings us to the end of our items that we are supposed to hear this evening. So that takes us to...
Just, sorry, just to clarify, our next meeting is on the 25th of September.
Oh, sorry, 25th. Sorry. I should have looked on my last page. Takes us to other business and the Historic Zoning Commission Report. Commissioner Smith, anything you'd like to share with us?
No, I think our meeting is next week, so I'll hopefully be back with an update on the 25th.
Commissioner Henley, anything for you from the parks?
Yes, and I'll be brief. One of the, we had several presentations at our Parks Board meeting, but one that was, I think, was the delightful presentation we heard from our Planning and Facilities Development team. And so this is the team that specializes in planning of our park system in all of its facilities, but also in the development side of it. And so that's the construction and putting things into operation. And one of the things that was just really cool to see is that there were, I believe, six participatory budget projects that were on the slate for the Parks Department, and five of the six have been completed and in operation as of the summer. And the final one, which is a soccer field in Antioch, should be open to the public next month. So to have, you know, a half dozen participatory budget projects be completed, I think is a great accomplishment. I highlighted it at the Parks Board meeting. I feel like it's so important for those projects, while all of our parks and all of our projects are important. And the community really does lean in and request something. Being able to deliver that and to show that, you know, the things they ask for can be delivered by this city, I think it's so important. And so, again, I highlighted it there, would, I'm taking the opportunity to highlight it again here at the Planning Commission. I think it's a special accomplishment and hopefully as we go forward in the future, we continue to have participatory budget opportunities, I think it means a lot to our community that we're able to deliver on the things they ask us for.
That's a great update. Thank you. As far as the executive committee, I don't think there's anything for the executive committee. We have the director's report. Anything you'd like to share?
I'm kind of intimidated of this system, getting big trouble if we have a problem. So two things. One is I plan to schedule a commission work session to talk sort of big picture about some major projects that the department is in sort of a pipeline. So some of them we're teeing up around housing, some of them are a little closer to inception, so I want to give you sort of a broad picture of the department's activities later this year and into next, and get any feedback about more detailed briefings that you'd like to have, but it's sort of at a strategic planning level, I would say. The second is, I apologize for being late, so maybe this has already happened, but I do want to welcome Councilwoman Horton to the Planning Commission. We are really thrilled to have you here. The council representative is so important. He chairs the committee at council that oversees our work. That means a lot of sort of double-duty timing-wise. It's just a big commitment from a public service perspective and I think that should be acknowledged, but Councilwoman Horton has shown really strong interest and leadership in the housing space, and so we're looking forward to working with him in sort of some of the work that we're already teeing up and some things that are sort of further down in the pipeline. And it's a two-year term, and so, and he was elected by his peers, and so, you know, that's a different council process than some other committee appointments. And so, anyway, just want to acknowledge, maybe you've brought us some special luck. This is the shortest agenda I've seen in about, I don't know how long, so maybe you're bringing some vibes, I don't know. Anyway, we're thrilled to have you here. And with that, I'll send out a sort of calendar inquiry about your availability for that work session, but thank you so much again for all of your, all of your service.
Thank you, Director. I was going to welcome...
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. I was gonna, yeah, no, say welcome, because again, we're putting him on the spot to see if there is anything that you would like to share with us from the council.
Just excited to be here. Thank you for the welcome.
Great, thank you so much, and yeah, we're looking forward to two years of time with you. With that, I think that we are done. If someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.